Good evening and welcome to the February 16th, 2021 regular meeting of the Lone Tree City Council. As been our custom during our virtual meetings, we want to welcome you all and then ask you to just be patient as we wait to allow folks to join us electronically for our virtual meeting. Typically, we start the meeting at about 7:03. But while we are waiting to begin officially begin, I'll describe how public comment is given during our virtual meetings. And again, I will repeat myself during the public comment. But just in case you're on now and interested in providing public comment during our meeting this evening. So comments are welcome and encouraged during our scheduled public hearing or during our public comment section of our agenda. There are three ways to submit public comment during our virtual meetings. Comments that were submitted in writing prior to the meeting have been forwarded to council and will be included in our official meeting minutes from this evening. If you would like to type a public comment during the public comment portion of the meeting, click the Ask a Question in the sidebar of the virtual meeting. Enter your name and address in the message window along with your public input. Your comment will be forwarded to council at once the meeting concludes and will be included in our official meeting minutes. If you would like to speak to council live this evening using your telephone during our public comment period or a public hearing, please indicate that in the Ask a Question box. Please include your name, your phone number, and your address, and staff will receive, will call you during the public comment so you can speak directly via your phone to council. Again, all public comments should be limited to three minutes. And a reminder that this is not an opportunity for a question and answer portion with council, but we want you to provide your feedback to us. Thank you so much. So we still have just approximately 30 seconds before we're going to officially start. Once again, we start at 7:03 to allow the public to join us virtually. Wonderful. Again, welcome to the Lone Tree February 16th regular meeting of the city council. It is now 7:03. We are going to officially open our meeting, and I will ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilmember Anderson is just connecting.
Wonderful. So what, we can skip him. We'll, we'll, we'll start with him. We'll start with Councilmember Carpenter.
Great. Councilmember Carpenter, are you there?
Yes, I am present.
Councilmember Shaw.
Present.
Mayor Pretend Brunick.
Here.
Mayor Malley.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson, are you on the call yet?
I'm here.
Great. He, I believe he's connecting over conference calls, so we may not get to see Mike tonight.
All right. Well, we, we, we know he is there. So, okay, well, it looks like we are all in attendance, and I will officially open our meeting, and I will ask everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all. Great. There are no amendments to our agenda this evening, so it is adopted as published. Please indicate by saying aye if there are any conflicts of interest from council this evening. Wonderful. We will now proceed with our public comment. And again, I reviewed this in our pre-opening of our meeting, but I want to make sure folks know how they can provide public comment to us during our virtual meetings. Once again, there are three ways. Any comments that were submitted in writing prior to our meeting have been forwarded to council and will be included in the official meeting minutes. Right now, if you would like to type your public comment, you may do so by clicking in the Ask a Question sidebar. Enter your name, address, and your comment. Those comments will be forwarded to council once the meeting concludes, and they will be included in our official meeting minutes. If you would like to connect to council live using your telephone, please indicate that in the Ask a Question sidebar right now, and you will receive a call from the council, excuse me, from the city, so you can speak to council via your phone. Again, you must type your name, your address, and your phone number in the Ask a Question box so staff may call you back. Once again, I want to remind everyone to please limit your comments to three minutes. Our city clerk will be keeping time. And again, this is an opportunity for you to provide feedback to council. It is not a time for question and answer, but we want to hear from you and would love to learn what you are thinking. So I know the comments were already forwarded to council that were received ahead of time. I'm going to check with our city clerk to see if any comments are currently being submitted in writing, in the Ask a Question box, or if anyone would like to speak with us. Jay Robb.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any requests for public comment at this time.
Okay. Well, we will keep the opportunity open to provide public comment while I read our, our announcements for this next couple of weeks. So upcoming events. The COVID community testing continues at the Canvas Credit Union every day from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. through March 2021. Please visit the city website for more information, and if you pre-register, it makes things go a lot smoother. There's a couple of livestream events happening at our Lone Tree Art Center. First, Betman and Halpin, For the Love of Love, Songs from the American Songbook is happening Friday, February 19th at 8:00 p.m. again, livestream. Another livestream event, A Passport to Culture, Rise and Move with the Cleo Parker Robinson Dance, February 21st at 1:30 p.m. Again, a livestream event, so you can dance in the privacy of wherever you're streaming from. Another livestream event, and a big favorite, is the National Geographic Live, Reimagining Dinosaurs, which is happening Wednesday, February 24th at 8:00 p.m. We hope you can join us for any of those livestream events, and we look forward to having our theater back open to increased capacity soon. I'm going to check with our city clerk to see if anybody has requested to speak with council live.
Thank you, Mayor. Still no request for public comment.
Okay. Then I will close our public comment period, and we're moving on now to ceremonial presentations. And this is an important one. We want to recognize Keith Simon's service on the Lone Tree Art Center Fund Board. And, and Keith has been a tremendous friend, partner, champion of the Lone Tree Art Center, and we have certainly appreciated his advice, his guidance, his expertise, and his support for far longer than he has served on the Lone Tree Art Center Fund Board. And I want to remind him that his service is not over. He may be stepping down from the Fund Board, but he is, we know, always going to stay near and dear to us. I should have coordinated better, but I want to now turn it to Michelle Sosa Mallory, who's going to speak to Keith's tremendous value add to our Lone Tree Art Center Fund Board. So, Michelle.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm really, and council members, I'm really pleased to join you tonight in extending our gratitude on behalf of the Art Center staff to Keith Simon for his many years of service, as you mentioned, that extends far beyond the two years that he served as president of our inaugural Lone Tree Art Center Fund Board. That's kind of mouthful. But we too look forward to continuing our work with Keith. Even though he won't be in that capacity, we just continue to look forward to our partnership with him. And we are so pleased to be able to share this time with you to honor Keith for all that he's done in support of the Art Center and all they will continue to do.
Thanks, Michelle.
I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, Michelle. And Keith, we have a lovely plaque which we want to get to you. We are looking forward to giving it to you in person, and we hope that that's not going to, it's not going to take many more months before we can actually gather at the Art Center and hand that to you. It's just a small memento from the city. But I do want to again let you know just your service has been a real gift. You have again championed the Art Center, and you have brought so many other friends and support to the Lone Tree Art Center. And I know your leadership on creation of the Fund Board was really instrumental and a great success. And it certainly has. With the wonderful support of the Lone Tree Art Center staff, I think the Lone Tree Fund accomplished a lot. And particularly noteworthy was the Set the Stage campaign that was really born in a board meeting and really executed by a tremendous team of Lone Tree staff, but really with the full support of you and your, again, championing the cause. So on behalf of a very grateful city and a very grateful city council and staff, we want to just say a huge thank you to you for that.
Thank you very much for your kind words, Mayor. I really appreciate it. You know, when I think back about the arc of the Lone Tree Art Center, right now, I kind of remember four key milestones. And the first one was in the early 2000s when I was on a committee evaluating the early feasibility of the Art Center. You know, back when I was still trying to figure out, you know, what the city was all about. It was in the very early days, of course. And then in the mid 2000s, we started to work on the citing of, of the land donation for the Art Center, which was also a very interesting process because at one point in time, the Art Center would have been where today, the, the Lincoln Commons Rose and the Morningstar residential facility is located. I think in the end, we all chose a much better place, and that area has certainly seen the benefit of that. And then, and then I remember watching Seth Hoffman back when he was an assistant city manager, managed the design and construction of the Art Center, and he did a great job with that. And then the last thing that I remember as a major milestone was the opening night in the fall of 2011. So that was pretty exciting. And, you know, I feel like being involved with the Art Center over all these years has, has been one of the most rewarding things that I've done in our role as community developers for the Ridge Gate community. And it has so much potential to create a civic legacy for the city and really for the region. It's been an honor to, to serve on, as the president of the inaugural Art Center Fund Board. And, and I pledge to you that I will continue to assist you with the Art Center in any way and whatever you ask. So I'm not going anywhere, and you know where to find me. So thanks again for this recognition.
No, thank you, Keith. And unfortunately for you, I do know how to get hold of you. So, no, but you really have been a great partner, and I think instrumental in the success. And we are certainly, 10 years later from, from the first opening performance, we couldn't be prouder of the accomplishments of the facility and the legacy it will leave for future generations. And all of that wouldn't have been possible without your good work and your continued good work. So thank you very, very much. And we'll get to that fancy plaque soon, okay?
Thank you.
All right. All right. Next on our agenda is consent. Consent agenda this evening includes minutes from our February 2nd regular meeting, claims for the period of January 26th, 2021, to February 8th, 2021, December 2020 Treasurers Report, and the Resolution 21-09, a resolution approving and amended and restated intergovernmental agreement regarding CARES Act local government distributions. I will look for a motion on consent.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thanks. Any opposed? Okay, we have unanimous approval. Moving on to the meat of our agenda this evening, community development. We're starting off with a project I know we're really excited about, the COBOL Attainable Housing Site Improvement Plan, Project SP 20-64R. Leading off our presentation from staff this evening will be Alex Heft. Alex.
Thank you, Mayor Malley, and evening, council. As you said, we're super excited about this project, not just because it's continuing to see development on the east side, but you know, this is the first project of its kind for the city, being an attainable housing project. So we're really excited to share about for you all tonight and for you all to learn a little bit more. Next slide, please. So tonight, we are requesting approval of a site improvement plan with a parking variance for 100,000 square foot, four-story, 67-unit attainable housing development with 67 parking spaces and outdoor amenity areas on a combined 1.8 acre site. Next slide, please. The proposed development is located right next to the RTD parking garage by the end-of-the-line station. It's directly north of where Schwager Ranch is, and it is directly adjacent to the future Ridge Gate Station apartments, which were approved this past fall. Next slide, please. So this is a view of the current site. If you're looking to northwest from South Havana, you can see that end-of-line parking garage right there. And it currently is a temporary detention pond for the vicinity. Prior to development, this temporary pond is to be relocated to a permanent, permanent detention location south of Ridge Gate Parkway and east of South Havana Street. Next slide, please. The proposal is consistent with zoning requirements. If you're looking at the Ridge Gate Plan Development District, this red section is what is known as the city center. It'll be located at the very south end of that city center. And kind of the framework for this planning area is intended to be a mixed-use urban environment, kind of with an intent to arrange residential and commercial uses as well as office and retail, and to be essentially located near intermodal transportation facilities. Next slide, please. So this is the layout of the city center sub-area plan. If you look at the very bottom of the south of it, you see that Park and Ride Light Rail commuter station area. Directly there is where these apartments are to be located. The city center has guiding principles that help establish a framework to guide the development of this area. And this housing project helps meet these principles by establishing a mixture of uses within the Park and Ride area, ensuring quality design to aid in the identity and overall character of the city center, and it helps accommodate to that multitude of transportation options. Next slide, please. So in 2018, the city adopted the Ridge Gate Attainable Housing Plan. And just kind of a quick recap, we know this was adopted to ensure that the city continued to provide housing for every life stage and every income level to ensure that the city is a place that anyone and everyone can thrive within the community. Within this housing plan, there's some design elements that they lay out that we'd like to see when it comes to attainable housing. And this project is helping meeting those elements, such as being compatible with the character and context of the area, complying with the requirements of the city center plans, and then providing outdoor amenities in the area of the property. This project also takes into account the parking variances that are laid out in the plan of allowing one space per unit. Next slide, please. So this is the overall site plan for this project. It is 1.82 acres, and the overall intent of the site is to provide attainable multifamily housing that's directly adjacent to Light Rail and also within a walking distance of future area amenities, such as the regional park. By utilizing the access onto railway from South Havana Street, the entry and exit of the site will be off railway across from the parking garage, which if you're looking at the site plan, the parking garage is directly west, right across railway. Also, the right-of-way and pedestrian access has been designed with connectivity to the Ridge Gate Station Apartments, which are directly north. There will be a four-way intersection with crosswalks to further enhance pedestrian safety and connectivity to immediate surrounding structures and amenities. Next slide, please. So for the site for parking, the required minimum number of spaces, if you were to base it off the one space per bedroom in the city center sub-area plan, would be 105 spaces. But the Lone Tree zoning code allows a further reduction of that of 20% if it's located within a quarter mile of transit. So with that 20% reduction, you're looking at 84 spaces. The applicant is proposing a total of 67 spaces, so a space per unit, which is 17 spaces less than the required parking after the 20% reduction. Even further, the Ridge Gate Attainable Housing Plan states that a minimum ratio of one space per unit is allowed so long as the developer can provide alternate transportation methods, such as RTD eco-passes or car share, just adequately show that the parking demand is going to be well below the above minimums. And with that into account, you know, the applicant is, is intending to provide one RTD NICO pass per unit for five years to further mitigate the need to possess a vehicle. And even more so, the Ridge Gate Station Apartments that were approved to the north of this did a pretty extensive parking study that concluded that one parking space per unit in the area was sufficient. And also, RTD recently released a study showing that while income-restricted properties near transit on average provide about 0.72 parking spaces per unit, residents typically only use 0.3 parking spaces per unit. There's also dedicated temporary parking spaces in the front of the building off of railway to better accommodate pickup and drop-offs in short-term parking. And if you look at that main parking area, the applicant has widened the trash pickup area to be able to suit delivery trucks. And that drive aisle between the parking spaces and that parking lot is wider than typical to accommodate larger turn races for delivery trucks, trash trucks, and even as well as fire trucks. The applicant has also allocated space for motorcycle parking in that subterranean garage. Next slide, please. The architecture here is consistent with the city sub-area plan and the city design guidelines. The proposed development is, is a good example of how attainable housing can be high-quality design and not differ from any market rate, how, market rate housing development. The sub-area plan calls for multifamily buildings to create a visual interest and a sense of human scale by varying the building form and materials. And if you look at this, you can see that by breaking up the massing of the building through vertical facade elements that provide a sense of proportion, rhythm, and pattern, and also by varying the building materials throughout in colors, it's created a much more visually appealing building. Next slide, please. As you can see here, the landscaping, the proposed landscaping is consistent with the requirements of the city center sub-area plan. 42.6% of the gross site is to be landscaped, with that total area not including interior parking islands, trails, and walks. Zero escape principles were utilized in the design to ensure that there's less water usage. And there's also plantings around the building consisting of evergreen trees and shrubs and ornamental grasses to ensure that there's a year-round interest. Plant, plant materials also were considered a long railway where people might be walking their dogs or just kind of out and about with their animals. And so the plantings that were chosen were chosen for their ability to withstand impacts from pet waste. Also, it should be noted that in that right-of-way on that east side of the building, or the west side of the building, Rampart Range Metro District has stated their responsibility to install and maintain landscaping in that right-of-way as well as provide trash receptacles and pet waste stations along railway. On the east side of that property, there's a four-foot-tall galvanized steel fence proposed near the future play area to help mitigate safety concerns and to kind of provide a buffer between the playground and traffic on South Havana. Also, there are two picnic tables and two trash receptacles planned to be adjacent to that playground. Next slide, please. All referral responses are being addressed by the applicant. Next slide. And staff finds that the application is in conformance with the Lone Tree Comprehensive Plan, the Ridge Gate PDD Sixth Amendment, the city center sub-area plan, with the exception of the parking ratio as described, Article 27 of the zoning code, the Ridge Gate Attainable Housing Plan, and the Lone Tree Design Guidelines. Next slide, please. And the City of Lone Tree's Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval on January 26th, 2021, with the condition that recommended by staff, this condition being that future playgrounds should require an administrative amendment to the site improvement plan before being installed. It must be installed before a city issuance of any certificate of occupancy. Next slide, please. And that's it for me. So I thank you all for, for listening. I'm going to hand this over to Keith Simon to give a little bit more background and introduce the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Alex. Nice, nice staff report. I'm Keith Simon, Development Director for Ridge Gate, back again. And we're really pleased, you know, to have this project before you finally. As Alex said, this is our very first affordable housing project under the 2018 Attainable Housing Plan that we put together with you all. And this idea of attainable housing or affordable housing in Lone Tree was something that was mentioned in the original 2000 annexation of Ridge Gate Into the City under the Ridge Gate PDD. But it was just a small mention. It was a mention that basically said, "A plan will be developed, you know, when the time comes." And who would have thought, you know, it's, you know, just, just a little over 20 years that the time has come. So we're really excited about it. We've got a great developer on this project, and we're looking forward to presenting it to you tonight. You know, the other important thing about this project is, is that combined with the other two residential projects that you have approved recently on the east side, that being the Shea Homes Southwest Village and the Regency Residential Market Rate Apartment Project right in this same area at the Ridge Gate Station. We're looking at over 2,500 residential units that will bring the east side to life with a very broad range of product type and price point. So we like that idea a lot. We've been working on this project with COBOL for several years now, and we participated with them in 2019 during their first pursuit of CHAPA funding. And, and you did too, Mayor. They did not get an award, which is, is typical. In fact, I think never is a CHAPA award given on the first go-round. But they were asked by CHAPA to come back again right away. And in May of last year, on their second try, they got the, they got the funding, which is essential to the project finance. This project has been approved by the Ridge Gate Design Review Committee, and you may have seen some of the comments that were adopted by the applicant during that process. We think that there were some important, important refinements and improvements to the project that were made during that process, and it was a good collaborative effort. I also wanted to lastly mention and just reinforce a couple of things. The Rampart Range Metropolitan District will be building the yet-to-be-named Small Park at the, at the Ridge Gate Rail Station on the, on the northern side of the RTD garage. That will be done, we're anticipating, in the summer of 2022 when this project is wrapping up. And also, Rampart Range has already started the work of the initial public infrastructure to support this project and the Regency Residential Project over there near the rail station. So that was awarded in December of last year. It's a couple-million-dollar project to, number one, remove that temporary stormwater detention pond that Alex mentioned, and a couple of other things to lay the groundwork for the COBOL project to move forward. So all things are, are timing together pretty nicely. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but probably more importantly, let me introduce Carl Cobol of Cobol &amp; Company to kick off his team's presentation.
Thanks, Keith, and welcome, Carl.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, thank you all for, for your time today. And I want to thank Coventry for having faith in Cobol as a developer here of affordable housing, and very excited that we were able to reward that by getting a, a CHAPA application. And love working with Keith. It's, it's clearly not just a job for him. It's a labor of love, everything, everything Lone Tree. So thrilled to be a part of this and thrilled to bring some affordable housing to, to the community. For those that don't know, Cobol &amp; Company is a 69-year-old this year, 69-year-old firm, almost 70. And we do all sorts of development, but we are Colorado-focused. When I started 10 years ago, we had just received our first award of tax credits, and we've been doing about one a year since then. So this is not the first one of these we've done. This will be our 10th affordable housing. This will be our tenth affordable housing project. We've done them in Denver, in Westminster, and Boulder, and have in operation almost seven hundred units of affordable housing. We intend to own these things for a long time, and so we design and build with that thought in mind, that any problem that is created through the design, ultimately, I'm going to have to deal with. So we stay focused on high-quality design because it will result in a better community. So there's a couple of things that I wanted to just touch on off the top here before I'll hand it off to Luke Cannon with our office to run you through sort of the balance of the presentation. The first is, there was a question that came through today from city staff that I'll just address real quick about. This is the first affordable housing project with Litech and Lone Tree, and the first one under the Affordable Housing Plan, and there's tracking that needs to occur there. And so we will enter into what's called a LURA, a Land Use Restriction Agreement, that will ensure that this project remains affordable for forty years. On top of that, we are entering into what's called a Special Limited Partnership, SLP, with Douglas County Housing Partners. We will not have to pay property tax associated with that, but it also gives them the right of first refusal if we were ever to sell this project, so they would have an opportunity to come in and ensure its ongoing affordability. So I can say confidently that we are going to provide a great project that will be affordable for a long time. The next, and probably biggest issue that we heard in Planning Commission was related to the parking, and I want to thank Alex for, you know, sort of previewing some of these comments. We do have one space per unit, and I know that is a little less than what the code calls for, certainly in market rate projects, but we are meeting what is required from an affordable housing project. I'll tell you that in our personal experience at Cobal &amp; Company, that parking is certainly sufficient. We have the sort of alpha version of this project called Garden Court. It's a hundred feet from our office building at Yale I twenty-five, sixty-three units with sixty-three parking spots, and we've never once had an issue with not being able to park it. Just like at Garden Court, which provides one neighborhood ecopass per unit, we'll be doing that here. I can also confidently say that this has, because of the Lone Tree Link, easily the best transit suite of services available to any of the projects that we have. So in addition to the adjacency to the station, we do have the Lone Tree Link, which is just a phenomenal service that the residents here will be able to enjoy. So in addition to, you know, my personal experience with affordable housing and the parking, there's just some additional statistics that were from that RTD study, and that study is pretty fresh. It came out in December of last year, so barely two months old at this point. And they looked at a bunch of different market rate and income restricted projects near their transit stops throughout the Denver metro area, and they found some statistics that should give comfort to everybody that we're not going to have a parking issue here at our fourth project at Ridge Gate. And so some of those are, at market rate properties, forty percent of parking goes unused at peak times, and that number of income restricted properties is fifty percent. So these are just more stalls at these properties than needed. Sixty-one percent of the low-income households will not have a car, and that is certainly true for some of the deeper affordable units we'll have. It is tough enough for some of these folks to afford the housing, even at the discounted rates, and being able to afford a car on top of that's a real challenge. So we're really excited that we're able to provide the transit options that we have here at the site. Sixty-three percent of low-income households will ride the bus one or more times per week. Fifty-seven percent of these will ride the train one or more times a week, and those numbers are just factors above what will happen at a market rate project. So the folks that'll move here into this project will use and appreciate the transit and will really be able to improve their household financial situation because of it. And I'll reiterate what Alex had mentioned, which is, income restricted properties typically provide point seven two spaces per unit. So remember, we're providing one per unit, so we're above that, but only point three six spaces per unit are used. So we should have no problem providing the necessary parking here. And as I mentioned, that certainly matches the experience that we've had owning and operating several of these properties near transit. So I didn't want to touch on the parking. I know it was a concern in planning, but these income restricted properties are just different, and we can't, our experience is that there won't be any issues with that. So with that, unless there are any questions, I'll hand it off to Luke Cannon with our office.
Thanks, Carl. While we have you here, I just want to quickly check through council if there's any specific questions on the parking. We might as well just get that out of the way since it was introduced, and I think you did a great job kind of adding a little depth to the conversation. So let me quickly go through council. Councilmember Shaw, any questions on the parking issue specifically right now?
Great. I did read some comments that in some ways it felt like there was a overflow for visitors in the RTD parking. If a visitor is coming in from out of the RTD district, it is not free parking, it is paid parking. So I, you know, I think there is still some caution in terms of educational process for visitors.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Shaw. So again, we've got a property very similar to this called Garden Court, and it is right next to a RTD lot. Folks haven't had to park there because we've never actually been utilized, so we can have dedicated visitor stalls there, right? Because we just never need all the parking. And so the front door from the leasing office is going to be on the east side of the building down near the parking. That's going to be the natural spot for folks to want to drive to. And again, in our experience, there won't be any issues with us being able to have that visitor parking. So we do understand that, and I appreciate the question, but I do think that we're going to have no problem accommodating the visitor parking and the resident parking on site.
Thank you. Great.
Councilmember Anderson, any questions regarding just the parking for right now?
No, appreciate the detailed explanation of their own experience and both the RTD study on what is reality on market rate facilities close to light rail. Yeah, with the background, I'm comfortable.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, Councilmember Carpenter, any questions regarding parking?
No questions from me. Makes sense.
Okay. Mayor Protem Brannick?
Yeah, thank you. I also am comfortable with it. I only did have one small question, though. Let's assume that if the parking was used, where do we anticipate people would go? Do we think it will overflow onto the street? Will that street be constructed in such a way that parking can be done along the street? Do we think they'll overflow into the parking garage at end of rail station? Just curious. I'm sure that was contemplated during the discussion.
So I'll talk, I think Keith can talk about, I think there are some on-street parking opportunities that will exist there. We have in the past contracted with RTD for limited parking stalls within the garage. And so it kind of depends on garage utilization, but we have a property called University Station. Not surprisingly, at the University Station Light Rail stop. And we actually contracted with RTD for pretty much the full residential allotment within their existing parking garage. So we've got connections over there who can do that if we have completely misjudged the parking. But again, I think we've got six or more units here that are at thirty percent AMI and even more than that at forty percent AMI. It's extremely difficult for folks in those households to afford a car. So when you consider that, you know, we certainly, I think, are going to have some extra play there, but we will certainly monitor it, and if it does become an issue and it cannot be accommodated on the streets, we have an opportunity to talk to RTD about providing the parking if necessary.
No, that's perfect. Thank you. I love when there is some secondary option that could be invoked if we are incorrect here, but I read thoroughly all the stuff that you sent, and I really appreciate the efforts and believe that we're probably well-covered with the sixty-seven that we have now. Thank you.
And I would just add to reinforce, you may recall, when you looked at the SIP for the Regency Residential Project, there's quite a bit of on-street parallel parking in that street system for the TOD area, not only the road that goes right up to the rail platform itself, but the other, you know, there's actually a street and block grid that's going to be created there, and all of those streets have parallel parking on both sides. So there will be quite a bit of parallel on-street parking available to, you know, visitors to both projects. And then, of course, you know, there is the option of going into the RTD garage if you want to. No charge if your car is registered in the RTD taxing district, but you might get a bill if your car isn't registered, and that'd probably be the last time you'd park there.
Yeah. Yeah, and I don't think we should count on using RTD as reliever parking for any project in the city, so that makes me nervous when I hear that. So, and I don't think we're doing that with this project, so. And if we, and should the need arise, there's a process that we would go through to request and get permission to do that. But that is not the path forward right now. And I, but, you know, what I have learned from my over twenty years of experience, whether on the council or the Planning Commission, is parking is an art, not a science. And this is a new art form for us with the income restricted properties. We don't have that experience. What we know for sure is that when the parking is not adequate, we hear about it. And so I think our questions are very thoughtful. I think they're accurate. I think they're spot on, because it's not something, it's something that's very hard to go back in and correct once the project's built. I do appreciate Cobal's perspective with over seven hundred units in the metro area and the decades worth of experience that you have with these projects. And I also appreciate the location of this project, not only adjacent to light rail, but also located in the City of Lone Tree with a free intra-city transit option, which I think does provide even more relief. So I am comfortable with the sixty-seven spaces. I would love it if Cobal would undertake a study for us. I appreciate RTD's studies, but, you know, the communities are so different, but I think some of the work that you've done, Carl, in particular, I think would be of great benefit to cities as they deal with this challenging issue. We know parking is an expensive amenity to be providing. The worst thing we can do is require an overparked building. That's not what the city wants. A bunch of parking spaces next to light rail doesn't look good for anybody. So, but if you could just put everything you just told us down in a book, in a study, and just distribute it out to all of the councils when you go and present on this, I think it would be of great value, because, you know, I wrote notes to myself about having our staff follow up with kind of a parking, like our own parking study on this, but sixty-seven units is nothing compared to seven hundred, so I'd rather have you guys do it. But...
Well, yeah, Mayor, thank you. We will certainly track this, and we'll keep you posted as to what we find. But you're right, there's nothing I hate more than over or underbuilding parking. They're equally as painful. But we feel very, very comfortable that the sixty-seven spaces are going to be more than sufficient here. And the other thing that I'll add is, you know, it's not just us that are looking at this, obviously you are, but we've got our lenders, our equity partners, right? Everybody at the table in our capital stack is looking at making sure that we have enough parking, because they want to know that we're not going to run into those issues when we lease them. And these are all folks that have lived in this affordable housing, income restricted world for a long time, and they're comfortable with it as well. So it isn't just me saying it. I've got people that are putting a lot of money into it that think we're okay.
I appreciate that. Appreciate that. And I appreciate the opportunity to dig in a little on the parking, because I think, as you could tell from the Planning Commission, it is probably one of the primary concerns. And Keith has heard it time and again on all of the projects that come before councils. So thank you for the parking discussion. I think we're ready to move on to the project.
Great. Well, when I let Luke handle that, he is our day-to-day on this, and I'm glad, because he's put a better-looking project forward than anything I've done, so I should take it away.
Welcome, Luke. Good to see you again.
Great to see you. Thank you for having me again tonight. I appreciate the time to speak to everyone again. It's great to be in front of you again after we last spoke this past fall. But as you can tell, the project has been progressing very nicely. I won't speak about parking very much, other than to also note that with regards to the on-street parking, we will be providing roughly four spaces in front of our building for temporary parking. So there will be some Uber, some Lyft drop-off spots, as well as some delivery spaces and temp parking for visitors to our property. So I won't go any further than that, because I think we've all spoken about that enough now. But I did want to quickly touch base on the other comments we've received from Planning Commission to make sure, you know, everyone is aware, we took everything to heart and tried to seriously address these in the best way possible. One was primarily a concern about deliveries, mail truck, FedEx, UPS, Amazon, and the potential to not only block parking spaces, but also park in the ADA parking space by our front door, which we certainly don't want to see that space utilized by someone who doesn't need it or use it. So we have, we've redesigned a little bit of the back of house there to create a larger entryway where a trash truck would be normally pulling in, to create a second spot to allow for a delivery truck to come in, they can drop their packages off, get in, and then drive away. That will be striped to ensure that nobody else is parking there full-time and leave that open. It can accommodate, you know, residents moving in, which, again, was also a concern brought to us, and I'd like to emphasize that that is a very structured process by our property manager. We schedule those move-ins so that residents have a window of when they can reserve a spot to pull their truck in and get their furniture and their belongings to their unit, and then move their truck and allow for somebody else to come in. So that is well thought through and coordinated by our property manager, but wanted to let everyone know that we believe we've addressed that concern as well, and I don't expect us to have any problems moving forward as this property begins operations. Secondly, in minor, was snow storage, obviously, leads into parking. You can't, we didn't want to store that anywhere where we'd lose potential parking spaces on-site. We had created a site, but we've refined that a little more and are going to provide a roll-up curb to make it easier for the trucks to be able to push that and push it further back, so it's not overflowing. And we're going to do a larger cobblestone there to make it easier to, so that we're not pushing landscaping around when that's brought in, because that can be a mess. So we have addressed that in our updated plans. And then, obviously, I think Alex hit on the dog waste and the trash cans. We will be, we will have some of that on our property back by our playground area, but the Metro District will be handling everything in the streetscape. And obviously, also, the new dog park that's going to be going in across the street, which is a fantastic amenity, will help address that problem as well. That being said, I don't want to take up too much time to get into the great presentation that our design team has put forth. So just a brief reminder of the project, for those of you that may have forgotten, this is sixty-seven units, and I do want to emphasize again the affordability of this project, because Carl hit upon it, but we have thirty-seven units at fifty percent AMI and lower, which is fantastic. But that's another reason why, you know, you talk about these affordable units that are deeper affordability, these individual tenants will really take advantage of the public transportation. So I think we'll really see that, but we're excited to have this wide range of affordability to be able to provide here at this project, and I just wanted to let everyone know exactly if fifty-five percent of these units or fifty percent AMI or lower, so I think that's great. That being said, I won't hold it any longer. We've got Paul Bryant from Bryant Flink Architecture, our design team, who's put together this wonderful building, and I'm going to go ahead and pass it to him and have him show us their flyby that they put together. And thank you again for your time tonight. Go ahead, Paul.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Luke. I appreciate that. Can you guys all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. All right, well, evidently, I have presenter control, so I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to manage this, but I'm going to request control, so if that doesn't work, Alex, I might have to have you run the slides. And it looks like... Alex, I think, can I have you run the slides, Alex? Do you mind doing that? I think we're going to have some issues on this end.
We can run the slides for you.
No, perfect. Outstanding. All right, well, I thank you very much. I'd like to introduce my colleague Rebecca Wilson, who's the project manager on this. I think just... I, I think just for starters, Alex, you did a great job with, with the statistics. And then Luke, obviously, we've, we've been going through this for over a year and, and Carl backed from 2018, trying to, to put together some affordable housing there on the east side of By 25 and Ridge Gate. It's, it's, it's a fantastic site for a whole number of reasons. But architecturally, one thing that piqued our interest specifically was sort of the, the sort of urban design, urban renewal and the, 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 the street wall and the sub-area plan that was all described. And, and one thing that we really, we strove for from the very beginning was to break the mass down into, into houses as opposed to a big building. And so I think as we go through this, I just want to draw your attention to creating row homes and townhomes and breaking down the mass of the building into humanistic scales as opposed to these big buildings that are horizontally organized. And I think you'll, you'll find that as we go through this. But I think before we get started, I'm going to have Rebecca just hit some highlights on just the overall project statistics and the site plan. So Alex, if you could hit the, the next slide, please. And then I'll introduce again Rebecca, and if you would, if you could take it away.
Yep, good evening. Hopefully everyone can hear me as well. I'm dialing. So we've got our site plan up here. As mentioned, 67 units, one, two and three-bedroom units. At the east side, which would be the, the top of the page, is the play area along Havana Street. And features some picnic benches. As we move sort of down the page, our, we've got 30 surface parking stalls. We have 37 parking stalls under the building in our partially subterranean garage. Leasing office is also on this side, directly accessible from the park, surface parking there. And as pointed out before by Luke and Alex, we've got this extra-wide loading zone that you can see kind of in the center of the building that's in stripes with the purpose of deliveries, trash truck, moving vans, et cetera. Also, kind of moving more down the, the page at the corner of the building, along railway is our community room with a outdoor patio. And you'll see this illustrated further in the presentation. But this really helps activate the streetscape along railway. And then there's several walk-ups to, to units, which is the further engaging the streetscape there. The building also features a fitness room, bicycle parking, and leasing office, which I mentioned. And then we've got four levels of units above that. So I think that pretty much wraps it up in terms of building statistics. So we can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. Do our animation here.
So we're at the corner of railway right now. The community center is at the bottom. You can notice the, and we'll run through this animation again. I, it's a little bit jerky with our connectivity, but you know, the, the, the verticality and the scale and mass is something we want to point out. But another thing that is, is something that may not be as familiar to affordable housing is the materiality. So this project features some, some full veneer masonry and some, some really high-end cementitious siding that's detailed with concealed fasteners. The windows are of, you know, they're not your typical white or almond-colored windows. They're, they're, they're this sort of gunmetal, blue metal sort of texture. I mean, they're just beautiful for vinyl windows. I mean, we're looking at essentially a market rate apartment building in terms of materiality, but this is an affordable housing project. And it's definitely stuck on my end. I don't know if you, is, is the, is the council members, is it, did you guys see it or did it just stop?
No, we saw it. It went completely around. So this is the second, this is the second one.
Okay, good, all right.
Can't you see my big head leaning in?
Yeah, okay, so on, on my end, it just froze on one screen. So I, I don't get the play-by-play. But essentially, the, the other thing we wanted to point out is, is the, the palette itself. And we'll look at a still image of the, of the palette after the animation. And really what we were after, you know, the, to the east, it's the wide-open expanse and, and all of the historic farmland and grazing pastures, and then the, the hill up to Castle Pines. And, and then the, the Colorado skies. So really, we were looking at a, a material palette. When you get off the, the train and you're looking to the east, that you get a, you know, there's a contrast between the sky and then the, you know, the, the hill as it, as it ascends behind the building. So it, it does feel more like in, in a cool palette. But again, it's contradicting or contrasting some of those other pops of, of, of color that we're really trying to accentuate. And then in the material palette, you see here, so we have a, a beautiful full veneer. And what I mean by veneer masonry, I mean, it's an actual brick. It's not a lick-and-stick brick or anything like that. It's a, it's a real brick elevation. And then we have cementitious siding in various sort of woodgrain patterns. And then we actually have true cedar in some soffit locations, some real wood. And then, you know, just, it's, 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 you know, all I can say is that it's, it's, it's what you see on market rate apartments all day long, even, even for sale product. This is something that you would see on there. And I will also add that through our extensive nine-month design phase, this thing has been verified through an intensive budget process with our, our partners in Alliance Construction. So, you know, what we're looking at here today, folks, is, is something that's in the budget, which is, which is, sometimes doesn't always happen. So again, you, you, you know, the, the street wall is broken down into, into, into individual homes as opposed to horizontal flats. It'll really, it really bring to life railway in sort of, I think, the true intent of the sub-area plan. And I think the material palette is going to give it, you know, a pretty contemporary feel and then utilizing all the, the natural surroundings that we have. So next slide, please, Alex. And then Rebecca, if I'm forgetting anything, please jump in. So council members and mayor, architectural elevations, I think really, again, to just highlight the verticality of the architecture. And, and I will also comment, when, when you're out on-site in, in 15 months, the detail in the masonry is something that I think you'll really enjoy. So we spent a lot of time and there's a lot of energy in to all of these individual houses having different masonry detailings and how we detail from soldier courses to sailors to headers. And it'll feel, you know, the inspiration honestly came from Amsterdam townhomes, Philadelphia townhomes, some of these old historical masonry city centers. And, and we tried to, we tried to bring that to life here, here on railway. So again, next slide. Well, I, before we go, sorry, Alex, I want to point out also one thing that, that is sort of a nice little gem to the project is the, the stoops on the street. So to bring to life that, that, that street wall and that pedestrian experience. Here in the, the top portion of the sheet, the, the, the vertical units that you see at the base, there'll be front porches and stoops, just like you would see in, in a, you know, in a Brooklyn townhome or a Philadelphia townhome. And so there'll be people out there, you know, and, and being able to lead from their front door out onto the sidewalk. So it, it's, it's really, you know, an interjection into activity along the street. Next slide, please. Yeah, a little more architectural elevations again. And sort of breaking down the scale and mass. And, and if there's any questions, please, we can obviously go back and, and address those or if you have any while looking at these. And then next slide, please. And then I think, so what we're looking at here, folks, is the, is the subterranean parking deck here. So one, one thing that, that, you know, Carl mentioned, obviously, we talked at length about, you know, parking, but you know, these are, the, the, we've got half of the parking is covered. I mean, that's, that's quite a nice amenity, again, for this market, this market type. On the left side of the sheet is where the leasing offices, mailroom. And then at the bottom-left corner there is bike storage. And then there is individual unit storage, if that's something that's desired by the tenant. Next slide, please. And then here we're looking at, so this would be level one. So this is at grade on railway. Again, the bottom-left corner is the community room. So there's a portion of the community room that is outside. It'll be furnished with a plumbed gas grill. And then obviously sprinkled with furnishings, so people can come down and grill a steak and then have their dinner there. There's also a full kitchen in the community room as well. So it's, it wouldn't be unreasonable for folks to come down on a Saturday night and, and have their meals done. Just to the right of that far-left corner, that's the, the fitness center and the main entrance to the building, sort of right there on access. And I will point out that that's directly adjacent and across the street from that park that Rampart Range is going to be constructing. So these folks that are going to be in that community room are going to be looking out onto that park across the street. And then as they enter the building and head towards the elevator, we have a large expanse of glass that's going to look out to the east over all that open space and towards Parker. And then, then units here on, on level one. And then next slide, please, Alex. And then back to the, the corner there. So the, the residential units are more of the same, just obviously that corner where the community room would be, would be another unit. And Rebecca, what did I miss?
I think you covered most of it. I think the only thing I'll add is at the east side, we did step back at the fifth floor just to reduce the parent height of the building a little bit. So that was hopefully apparent in the, the animation.
Sure, yeah. More attention to trying to keep the scale down to a pedestrian and a humanistic level. I will also add that all of these units are going to be furnished with their own mechanical system or a fan coil or Aquatherm system. Often you see in these scenarios where you get in hotels, where you get PTAC units that come out of the windows. That was something that Carl and Luke fought for in the financing so that, you know, you don't have the building littered with mechanical systems. It's, it's something that was a huge plus, obviously, to the design. And, and again, something that, that we're, 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 we're just tickled with, frankly, because it's, you don't, you don't get that opportunity every day in this market type. And then Luke, if I'm forgetting anything on the, the bells and whistles that this, this building's going to have, please, please jump in.
No, I think we, I think you covered it all. I appreciate your time and running through the animation. If, if you, if you don't have anything else, we're happy to open it up now for, for questions.
Yeah, sounds good.
You know, I would love to, before I open up to rest of council, I'd love to know more about the Enterprise Green Community Sustainability provisions. Is that something that is specific to attainable housing? Or is that something that is incorporated in multifamily housing? I haven't.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, no, this is something, when Luke, maybe you can talk to it. It's specifically right for CHAFPA, but maybe you can talk about that side of it and then we can talk about what was added into the design to meet those requirements, Luke?
Sure. So CHAFPA does require, they've got 2015 Enterprise Green Community standards that you have to meet in all CHAFPA projects. They get updated every few years. We were in 2011 standards up until about three years ago. So that certainly drives, and honestly, they, they are, that is almost matching code. Code has become much more strict and stringent over the last few years. But, you know, we, we do put time in, in looking at where can we, where can we make a more efficient building? Because, because, you know, we are, as, as operators, concerned about the operating cost. And, and, and that allows, you know, how can we do this in a way so that it's not only operated efficiently, but also more comfortable for our residents? Because we, we want residents that move in, we want them to stay. We want them to love where they live. And, and that's why we're so excited about the, the location, the design, and also a comfortable unit that they can live in. So we have put a lot of time into that, but there's a point standard we have to meet. And we, we always go well and above that point standard, not only just from the energy efficiency standpoint, but also Enterprise Green Community places an emphasis on locations of properties, certainly having access to, to transportation like we do here is a big plus for Enterprise Green Community. And you get points for that. So yeah, that's something we, we look at every, every time we design a project. And Paul, I'll let you elaborate a little bit more on, on what was put into the building.
And actually, I'm.
All right, go ahead, Carl, please.
I'm going to jump in real quick and just, Mayor, the, you may not have heard of that before. It is, so Enterprise is a national organization that focuses primarily on affordable housing. CHAFPA adopted this as opposed to the LEED standard, which is, I think, something that most people are familiar with. LEED's costs to certify are very high. And in affordable housing, what you don't want to have is cost. And so what we always joked was that little glass plaque that, you know, is they always put in the lobby, right? You walk in and it's, oh, here's, here's our LEED. That's the most expensive thing in the entire building, right? You know, per pound, that's the most expensive piece of material that was there because it cost $150,000 or whatever. So, so Enterprise is similar to, to LEED, but it doesn't quite have the cost associated with it. And Paul will talk about what it is. But, you know, Luke touched on it. We actually end up paying the utility bills for our residents. This is a gross lease. Most other market rate deals are net leases. I won't get into the reasons for it, but the takeaway is that we care about what, how much the utilities cost because we're, we're paying them. And so that's, that's the focus. But I'll let Paul talk about what, what's included through the Enterprise Green.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Carl. And, and I think the, the biggest thing that, that I think that the design team focused on was a way to analyze energy consumption or performance, and, you know, the envelope performance of how much, you know, I, I think most people are familiar with an R-value, right? So, so in the, you know, and they, they buy pink bat insulation, there's an R-value of 21. Well, what does that mean, right? Well, so there's two ways to focus on energy consumption when you design a building. And one is a prescriptive path, which is you sort of add the bits and pieces up of everything and it gives you a number. And it's not really that efficient and it's not really that specific. And so what we did through Enterprise and with our energy team, we did an energy model. And so every surface of the building and every layer, every piece of gypsum board, every, every piece of cementitious siding was all equated into what the overall thermal resistance value of this building is. And then that allowed us to focus our attentions in different areas and the types of glazing we chose, or more insulation here, maybe less here, or the types of mechanical systems we chose. So we were able to really focus and dial in on that based on the energy model, which is something that you don't see all the time. We get it a lot in education buildings and government buildings, but not really in multifamily buildings. So that was something that was key. And then there's, there's a certain levels of checklist and things that you can add or subtract. And I think I'm going to let Rebecca sort of highlight some of those things that, that we focused on to create, you know, to hit that point level that we needed to hit per CHAFPA requirements.
Yeah, so that included things like low-flow plumbing fixtures, again, insulation. I think we had sections on materiality, obviously our HVAC system, efficiency. So things like that, kind of like the systems of the building that there were certain energy standards associated to them that we, we had.
Yes, certainly the lighting requirements, but also back to the HVAC. So there's also, it's not necessarily about just energy consumption, but it's about health and welfare of the building. So how many air changes happen within a dwelling unit to bring fresh air into the building? So it's, it's back to, you know, Carl's point. It's, it's, it's a, it's a great system that people can rely on and use that they don't have to spend $150,000 to get a little plaque in, in, you know, in their. in, in, you know, in their lobby. And you effectively get the same quality of building at the end of the day. So hopefully that didn't take too much time, council members.
No, I, I, I'm very intrigued about learning more. I think, thank you for that, I appreciate it. All right, still, I don't want to hog all the time. So I'm going to turn it over to some of my council members now. So council member Anderson, please, what comments, thoughts do you have, questions?
I don't have any questions at this point. I appreciate the, the attention to detail and the considerations that have been made in terms of providing this amenity in our community. It is so important to our vision of what we want to be as a community. And I, and I appreciate the, just the level of detail on, on everything from sustainability to appearance, to transition, you know, mode of transportation and access to the light rail and all that. Thank you for sticking in there and the perseverance over many years to make this a reality. It will be a, an asset to our community in terms of helping people that struggle with income but need a place to live close to where they work.
Thanks, Mike. Council member Carpenter.
Yes, and I will echo that as well. It's a much needed product type and we've talked about it for a long time and it's great to see it come to fruition and, and to a reality. And I don't have any further questions, but I know that Rampart, I just wanted to acknowledge Rampart Range Design Review Committee and our Lone Tree Planning Commission for all the due diligence that they've done and for you being so proactive and at least talking to us about the, the parking issues and everything else. But I think it's a great project. I'm really excited about it. I think it makes a lot of sense and look forward to having some new neighbors here. Thanks.
Okay, council member Shaw.
Thank you, yes. What a lovely building and I am so pleased to have heard all of the thoughtful process that you went through to choose the materials and to make this a wonderful space for, for people. I'm, I am beyond overjoyed to, to welcome you and the building to the community. So thank you.
And council member Shaw is our, is our attainable housing guru on council. So she has done, she, she sits on the Douglas County Housing Authority for the city and she knows her stuff, so we appreciate her insights. Council, Mayor Protan Brannick.
Yeah, nothing, nothing to add really. Everyone said all that, all the things I would have said. I am super excited about the amenity profile and kind of the look and feel, I think, to several of you making the point before, it's easy for that to be not quite as nice in, in some of these properties. And, and we care deeply about the, kind of how this is going to emerge down in that section. It's just a really wonderful urban feel and just, I'm super excited about that. Thank you for your diligent work, we really appreciate it.
Thanks, Kathy. So I don't really have any questions. I, I do want to echo the comments council made. I really love the design. I really appreciate the thought that went into the design and, and the aesthetics, I think, are very, very attractive. I have questions about, you know, this is the city's first attainable housing project and we are just so invested in making sure that it's successful. And should the SIP proceed this evening, which all indications are it will, I'm just curious, for a project like this, just operationally, do we, do, do, do folks all move in at about the same time? Or do you anticipate a very staggered three-month process? And the reason I am asking is I would love to, as a mother of kids that have been recently in college, when it's still in college, kind of like a welcome orientation to the community i- if there's an opportunity to do something like that, where we would have representatives from the school district and the library district and South Suburbans Park and Recreation District and from our police department and from, you know, just to, to, and from RTD potentially, to just welcome the people to the city and the, the residents to the city and kind of give them a head start on, on how you get around and where you might want to go and where the trail system is and where you can go out for a walk. And so how do people move in and would we have an opportunity to do something like that?
Well, mayor, I, I thank you for, for bringing that up again. I, you had mentioned that when we presented in front of CHAF and they, they told me they appreciated that. So yes, the answer is of course that we would love to, to be able to do something like that. On a project like this, we would anticipate the lease up really only being about three months, but it would take, it would sort of take that long. We can't have more than two folks moving in per day. The process of getting folks into the leasing office and getting them income complied with and everything else does, does take some time. But I think that we can find a time, you know, two and a half, two to two and a half months after we open, where either everybody's moved in or we know who the residents are that are going to move in and, and put something together for them. And I know that it would be something that I don't think CHAF has seen before because I've not seen it. And I think could really highlight something new and fun and interesting to make sure that, that these folks, some of whom weren't Lone Tree residences, residents before, feel welcome and understand everything that Lone Tree has to offer. Because believe me, we'll be, we'll be singing to the high heavens what, what everything Lone Tree has when we're in the lease up process. But, you know, getting, getting something like this would be unique. And, and so you're, if you're willing to help with it, we, we would love to host it.
Yeah, I, I really think it's important to do it and, and make sure that they feel part of this community and they know how to navigate this community. So, and, and I think maybe the housing partnership could also be a partner in that. So I didn't want to lose that idea. That's something I didn't just say to try and get my, that's something I authentically want to do. And I think, you know, setting everyone up for success, those type of things make a difference in my mind. So, you know, building community. So I'm glad, you know, staff, I don't know that, that the Lone Tree staff had heard my thoughts on that. So, so now everybody heard them. So with that, that, that was really my only thing is that I, we do have COVID concerns. We want to make sure everybody's safe and those are addressed. But the timing of this, I'm hope, hopefully COVID will be, you know, at least we'll, we'll be all comfortable with our new normal there. So, and lots of vaccine, vaccinations are happening. So, all right, that's great. That was my only question. I think you guys did a great presentation. Again, I want to thank our planning commission. They carry the water here and asking all the tough questions and council very much appreciates being able to review their good thoughts on that and also the great staff work. And, and, and again, so I don't think there's any more questions. If staff would put up the motion slide, I will look for the motion from council.
So I move to approve the COBOL attainable housing site improvement plan with the parking variance project SP twenty.
Hey, Alex. Alex, you don't have to read it, council will do that part. But thank you. Thank you. I'm gonna, yeah, no, you, this is the first time around with us. So we, 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 I make council read, do that. They have to do something, Alex, you can't do everything for us.
Okay.
So we will have, you just put it up there and I'm going to actually go ahead and ask council member Shaw to do the honors.
Thank you. I move to approve the COBOL attainable housing site improvement plan with the parking variance project SP twenty dash six four R with the following condition. Future playgrounds shall require an administrative amendment to the site improvement plan before being installed and must be installed before city issuance of any certificate of occupancy.
I second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, I think I heard everyone, any opposed? No, okay, motion carries unanimously and we look forward to this next exciting chapter in the city of Lone Tree and some new partners. So thanks to everyone who presented tonight, we very much appreciate it and we look forward to continued progress. All right, with that, I want to move on. We do again have a full agenda this evening, folks. We're going to move on to our public works this evening and Resolution 21 dash oh four, a resolution approving an IGA between the city of Lone Tree and Park Meadows Metropolitan District regarding a financial contribution towards milling and overlay of Lincoln Avenue. This is going to be followed by another IGA with the city of Lone Tree and Heritage Hills Metro District on the same financial contribution for the project. So Justin Schmitz, our Director of Public Works and Mobility is going to lead off both of those, will act on them independently, however. So Justin.
Yes, good evening, mayor and members of city council. As the mayor mentioned, we have two resolutions for consideration tonight. These are very long presentations, so hang in there with me as we go through them. The first presentation, we're going to go to the next slide. Again, we did present on this a study session at the last council meeting. We also presented on the Omni Park Metro District IGA at our last meeting. So this is very similar in nature, but if you have any questions, anything's come up, please let me know as we go through it. So for this one that we're talking about right now, this is our IGA with the Park Meadows Metro District. And as you can see, they have agreed to a very generous contribution of $500,000 that will be applied to the Lincoln Avenue repaving project with the goal of approving the IGA today at our February 16th meeting. Again, I updated this slide from what we saw last time and we have approved and sent on the Omni Park Metro District IGA that we finished at our last meeting. Next slide. To remind everyone, there are sort of three agreements and all, these are the same agreements that were in the previous IGA and what we'll be talking about with the Heritage as well. But I did want to highlight them because they are important. Again, the city has agreed that the district's contribution shall not create for the district any responsibility, liability with respect to the project, which is the sole responsibility of the city. Makes sense, it's a city managed project and we are responsible for it. The city agrees that we'll repay the district the contribution in full in the event that the city fails to complete construction of the project, as evidenced by the city's acceptance of the work by December 31st, 2021. We already had good conversations with our contractor, so I have no doubt we will be way, way ahead of that schedule. And again, the city agrees and acknowledges that the contribution is a one-time contribution for only the 2021 asphalt overlay project. Next slide. So any questions on this one? And then I do have a motion to approve it on the next slide.
Okay, I doubt there'll be questions, but I will pause briefly. So if a council member has one, jump in. Okay. Pretty, pretty straightforward from our, from our last council meeting, but a new, very generous dollar amount.
Correct.
Oh, are you ready for it?
We're ready, Kathy.
Okay. I move to adopt Resolution 21 dash oh four, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Lone Tree and Park Meadows Metropolitan District regarding a financial contribution toward milling and overlay of Lincoln Avenue.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and no, no opposition, motion carries unanimously. And thanks to, again, staff for great work and our partners at Park Meadows Metropolitan District. This, this was a game changer for us in our 2021 budget and we so very much appreciate them. So, all right, we've got one down and one to go. And I think we're going to be looking at very familiar slides. So why, why don't we go ahead, Justin?
Yeah, so for Resolution 21 dash oh five, this is the same resolution approving our IGA with Heritage Hills. Next slide. So again, this one that we're referring to is with Heritage Hills Metro District for a contribution amount of $25,000 with an IGA approval at tonight's meeting. The one thing I did want to highlight, you can just keep in mind, we do also continue to track sort of this additional funding that is going to be used from Rampart Range Metro District that you can see attached here. So that will close out with the approval of this, all of the open items on this IGAs. Next slide. Again, these are the three agreements. I won't read through them again because I think we're familiar with them, but these three agreements are in place and written in the IGA if you have any questions. So with that, we'll go to the next slide and any questions in reference to our agreement with Heritage Hills Metro District?
Think council just gratitude again for our tremendous partnership. So we thank them very, very much. Hopefully we got them a Valentine's Day card. All right, we'll look for the motion.
I'm happy to do this one too, since I reside.
Since you already practiced.
Yeah, that's right. I move to adopt Resolution 21 dash oh five, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Lone Tree and Heritage Hills Metropolitan District regarding a financial contribution towards milling and overlay of Lincoln Avenue.
Aye, second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We made quick work of public works this evening, guys, so that's good. All right, thanks, Justin, for your good work. All right, on to administrative matters. We have public, we have a couple of public hearings this evening. The first one on ordinance 21 dash oh one, an ordinance amending Chapter Four of the city of Lone Tree Municipal Code to add a new section four dash three dash one four zero and a new Article Six concerning construction use tax credits and fee waivers for qualifying attainable housing projects. This is second reading, excuse me, second, yeah, second reading, and I'm opening the public hearing. We're going to turn it over to Kristen Bumgarner, Deputy City Manager, for our staff presentation.
Thank you, mayor and council. Next slide, please. So as we've talked about over the last couple of months, our attainable housing policy documents already in place with the city cover a lot of the things that we're hoping to kind of bridge the gap with this ordinance tonight. But we already have a lot of things in place, including our comprehensive plan, our east side subarea plans, requirements in the east side annexation agreement, which actually give set numbers of units that have to be developed as attainable, and our regate attainable housing plan that was adopted in July of 2018. Next slide, please. As was presented previously with the Gray Project, we're really excited to have our first attainable housing project coming forward to city. And as was mentioned there, the intent of the attainable housing plan is really to provide diverse housing stock that gives options to people to remain in Lone Tree as they age while also providing opportunities for housing for people to live close to their jobs at all ages. Next slide, please. So none of these documents though require the city to provide any type of direct waivers or incentives. And so with this ordinance, staff is recommending adding a new section to Chapter Four, which is the finance and revenue section to provide an option for tax credits and fee waivers for projects that meet certain attainable housing criteria. This code change would apply citywide, though we do talk about it a lot in relation to the east side. This ordinance would apply for any attainable housing project that came forward in the city. Next slide, please. So just as some background, we did talk about this quite extensively with city council as this was a big policy decision that we needed guidance on. And so this was presented in two study sessions to receive council feedback, both on January 5th and on January 19th. And then we did the first reading, which was approved on February 2nd. And so tonight, we are looking for consideration on second reading for the public hearing and no changes from what we presented on first reading are proposed. Next slide, please. So really, there's two areas that are being considered tonight. The first one is a brand new section to be added to Chapter Four, Section four dash three dash one forty, which will be under the construction use tax credit title. And in this area, it's going to define that this is specific to construction use tax only. It is up to 100% tax credit for construction use tax. We do define separate criteria for owner occupied dwelling units versus rental dwelling units. And any application for a construction use tax credit would have to require city council approval. Next slide, please. The second area that's being proposed is in section, in Chapter Four, a new Article Six, which would be Section four dash six dash 10, which is an adoption of fees for services. And so this is really a cleanup to our code, first to add in some language about our current process, how council has the ability to adopt fees to recoup city costs by resolution each year, which the city does do, but we are taking this opportunity to actually write this into our finance and revenue code. And then secondly, in addition to the tax credit, we're proposing also a new Article four dash six dash 20, which would be waiver or reduction of fees. This would apply to any fees that are under a council adopted policy of resolution, that those fees could be waived or reduced up to 100%. But in particular, this is really being added to also look at fees for attainable housing where there can be up to 100% fee waiver as well for attainable housing qualified projects. And again, for attainable housing fee waivers, those have to be approved only by city council. Next slide, please. So as far as the criteria that will be evaluated, we discussed this quite a bit previously, but as a reminder, on rental criteria, that is going to be a lot more based on a formula and has to meet some minimum criteria. The first one being that there has to be at a minimum 20% of units to provide housing for persons or households with incomes at or below weighted average of 60% the area median. median income. So this would be based on an average, and so in the project we previously saw, for example, it was around 57% on average. Also, secondly, it must be kept attainable for a minimum of 40 years. And then based on those two things, if those are met, then a tiered approach would be applied based on a direct proportion to the percentage of attainable for rent dwelling units. So for example, if a project comes in with 20%, 25% of the total dwelling units meeting the criteria above, then they would qualify for up to a 25% tax credit and fee waiver. And that can go up to 100%. Next slide, please. On the owner occupied criteria, after doing extensive research on kind of market demands and what works in different communities, we did feel like it was really important to add a provision and to specifically incentivize development of attainable wholesale to provide more housing product options for our home buyers. But in relation to that, though the city is very supportive of it and wants to leave room for opportunity for the development community to come forward with projects, it was hard to define specific criteria. So we did end up removing specific minimum criteria and included a general provision in the code to negotiate affordability criteria, tax credits, and fee waivers on any owner occupied project on a case-by-case basis through an agreement between the applicant and the city. And we feel like this is a nice kind of middle ground that we, again, want to show the policy decision that this is an important area for the city, but also leave some flexibility to see what might come as far as different project options in the future. Next slide, please. And so with that, that was pretty brief based on our prior discussions, but definitely open to any questions council has or any clarification you need on the proposed ordinance.
Thanks, Kristin, and I think you were very accurate. We have had ample opportunity to go through this, but this is an important next step for us, so I want to make sure council has all questions answered. So I will run through, starting with Councilmember Shaw. Any questions, thoughts, comments?
No questions. I'm just glad we're on second reading.
All right, Councilmember Carpenter.
No questions, but thanks for all your hard work on it.
Councilmember Anderson.
No questions. I appreciate that staff measure up to the challenge of finding a way to bring something to us that we could all agree to. Incentivizing this is a great opportunity, and hopefully we have some people come forward and try to take advantage of the opportunity.
Mayor Pretan Brannick.
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay, this is, again, as I mentioned, a public hearing, so I do want to see if there has been a request for public comment on this issue this evening. So I'll ask our city clerk if anybody has indicated in the "ask a question" box that they would like to make comment on this this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any requests for public comment.
Okay, well, we'll let people, you know, it's harder virtually, we'll give them a minute, and while that minute happens, I will indicate that I don't have any questions either. I appreciate the process that staff has gone through to bring this forward, and I think Councilmember Anderson said it well, that it's something that we all can live with and agree on, and hopefully we'll do something to move affordability forward with future housing projects. So again, double-checking with our city clerk on any requests to comment.
No requests, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, all right, then I will close our public hearing, and I will ask Kristin to put the motion forward and look for a motion from council.
I move to adopt Ordinance 21-01, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the City of Lone Tree Municipal Code to add a new section 4-3-140 and a new Article 6 concerning construction use tax credits and fee waivers for qualified attainable housing projects on second reading.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Kristin, but you're not finished, so moving on, our next public hearing this evening, Ordinance 21-02, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code by adding a new Article 7, concerning a tax incentive program for businesses in the entertainment district plan development. And this again is second reading. It is a public hearing, and I am opening the hearing. So we'll start with our staff presentation, again, by Kristin Bumgartner.
Thank you, Mayor Malley, and council again. Excited to have this one in front of you this evening as well. Next slide, please. Staff tonight is proposing an ordinance to create a tax shareback program that would incentivize appropriate reuse or redevelopment projects in the Lone Tree Entertainment District. Next slide, please. This ordinance is being focused to be used to encourage a development for an area for people to shop, eat, and pursue leisure and recreational activities, and includes incentivizing uses such as restaurants, retail shopping, entertainment venues, and other similar uses. All current zoning and city design standards would apply, and properties must be written or be within the Westbrook Entertainment and Sports District PD. Next slide, please. As a reminder to council, this plan development occurred back in 1998, and on the next slide, we can see kind of in today's map what that area encompasses. It is in between Yosemite Street and C470, and then goes behind the city office buildings that we're currently in. This whole area has been an area focused for a long time with the city in wanting to make sure it continues to be a vital amenity for our residents and businesses. Next slide, please. So much that back in 2013, we did do kind of a vision book outlining what we hope this area was going to turn into, and we have made some progress in doing some traffic improvements on the intersection of Kimmer and Park Meadows Drive. We've added the nice park that's at that same intersection. There's been lots of investments by individual businesses with remodels in the movie theater and at the bowling alley, and Grist coming in to take up half the space at the Rio. So a lot of great things have been accomplished in this area, but unfortunately, we do continue to see some decline, and with COVID, it continued to get worse in 2020. And so we're hoping that this ordinance will help to kind of revitalize this area as it continues in the future. So on the next slide, we're going to quickly go through just kind of, there's really three different things that are happening right now in the entertainment district. We've seen over the last several months, there are currently several properties that we're referring to as being in transition, including the Sweet Tomatoes property, the old Miyama Building, some of the other properties that are in the shopping center where Starbucks is, and then also where Los Arcos, a former Mexican restaurant, was located. And so there is a lot of turnover, and we're seeing in the case of the Los Arco site and the Miyama site, that these uses are being kind of changed to more service uses. So the Los Arco site is looking at being a vision clinic, and the Miyama building is currently owned for medical use. And so we're wanting to make sure that kind of the intent of this area continues to be that it is kind of the entertainment venue of the city. Next slide, please. We also now are seeing additional properties for lease or sale, and a lot of these have to do with COVID. And so during 2020, Mimi's, Fox and Hound, the Ichiban Buffet, those are all now up for lease or sale, as well as there has been some discussions about one of the hotels changing ownership and looking at possible different uses. Next slide, please. And then we're all familiar as well that there are two properties that have had long-term vacancies, and we're hoping an ordinance like this will help to drive some redevelopment opportunities on these two locations. Next slide, please. And then lastly, as I mentioned, over the last several years, both the movie theater and the bowling alley both had reinvested quite a bit of money to kind of revitalize these areas and their businesses, which were doing great. And unfortunately, the COVID pandemic has really impacted this industry, and we're continuing to see one of them being closed and one of them having limited capacity and not exactly sure when those would be operating normally. Next slide, please. So all in all, on the properties we just went through, there's approximately 275,000 square feet of property that is somewhat either vacant, in transition, or has been temporarily closed due to the COVID implications. So because of this, we'll go into kind of what staff is proposing for consideration to hopefully incent people to want to reinvest in this area. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, this proposed ordinance is in addition to Chapter 4. It would be a new Article 7 and would be titled the Enhanced Tax Incentive Program, or the E-Tip Program. Really, the drivers of this ordinance is to encourage redevelopment and/or substantial expansion of businesses in the entertainment district for a limited period of time. Staff is proposing this ordinance to be in effect for seven years and then can be reconsidered at that time. We would be hoping to drive employment opportunities, preserve and enhance a tenant mix in the area, stimulate economic and social vibrancy, as well as retain and increase tax collections, which contribute to providing municipal services for the city. Next slide, please. So in this ordinance, we do have several definitions because there's new things that we're looking at having within our code, so I'm going to go through those quickly with council. The first one is we define an enhanced tax as the amount of admissions and our sales tax over an established base amount. And really, in looking at this, we want to make sure that the city does remain whole in the sense of our tax base, that we still retain what we had previously been getting for those properties or like properties, but that any investment that drives increased taxes, then we're looking at an opportunity to share that back with the property owners for a limited amount of time. Secondly, as I just kind of explained, we will establish a base amount, which is sales and our admissions taxes that have been collected by the city from the property or business owner over the previous 60 months. And so we would take that, and then only taxes above that amount would be shared. For newly established businesses, because there are some vacant pad sites in this area, we would look at a similar business to establish that base. Next slide, please. We also define a project as being a new business or a substantial expansion of an existing business generating sales or admissions tax revenue. So if a new business does come in that does not generate sales or admissions tax, they would not be eligible for this program. And then each of these businesses would be required to enter into an E-Tip agreement with the city, and it would have all the details, including the base amount, shareback periods, shareback percentages, et cetera, on a business-by-business basis. Next slide, please. And then finally, in addition to the shareback that will be established from the base amount, we also wanted to look at additional opportunity for businesses that would consider putting in enhanced improvements. And enhanced improvements are defined as improvements over and above that which would otherwise be required through the city's development process. That could include things, but not limited to streetscape, plazas, parks, public art, fountains, identification signs, traffic-related improvements, or mobility connectivity. And in those cases, when there's enhanced public improvements, we would look to offer an additional incentive, which I'll talk about in the next slide. And so, sorry, first, before we get into the shareback specifics, the criteria for participation that businesses would have to meet is they would first have to submit an application through the city clerk's office. We would require the business to likely generate enhanced taxes of at least 7,500 in the first year of operation. We did put this requirement in instead of having a requirement for time as vacant. We thought that we didn't want to incent businesses to stay vacant, so instead, we did want to have a minimum amount, though, just from the administrative side of having this ordinance and these agreements in place. We would also require that the property is vacant, there's a planned transition of tenants and/or no businesses operational. They must meet the city's zoning plan development district and design standards and guidelines, and there must be public-related benefits, which we discussed early on as far as job creation, tax generation, and redevelopment. Next slide, please. So as far as the incentive structure, for admissions and sales taxes, this would be based on a formula that we would consider on a case-by-case basis, but we would imagine it to be a tiered approach that would go for no more than five years. And we give this example in the ordinance that the sharebacks each year would be no more than the amounts listed. So these could be less than this, but they would not ever be in year one over 90% and year two over 75%, et cetera. In addition, the construction use tax for the projects on a limited basis would be considered as 100% shareback if enhanced improvements are being brought forth as part of the project. And so those sharebacks would be then based on those improvements, and it'd be up to 100% based on those improvements proposed. And then lastly, we did include that we have the flexibility to look at a lodging tax shareback on a limited basis per an E-Tip agreement, and this would be limited, but since there are a couple hotels currently in the area, and we know that this is also an area that has struggled over the last couple of years, we wanted to at least leave this option for consideration if the right redevelopment opportunity came forward. Next slide, please. So that was a pretty quick review of the ordinance proposed. Again, we have discussed this previously, but I'm super happy that council is considering this this evening and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Kristin, and again, really thorough and exciting, I think, proposal for council's consideration. So let's start with Councilmember Carpenter.
No, no questions, but let's hope we get some takers. I think it's well constructed.
Great. Councilmember Anderson?
No questions. If it can move us towards our vision for the entertainment district, it's all good.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Shaw?
No questions. I appreciate staff's work. This is promising, I think, so I'm excited.
Yeah. Mayor Pretan Brannick?
No question, thank you.
Okay, and again, I do not have questions either. This is a public hearing, so I want to make sure the public has an opportunity to provide comment. Again, I will check with our city clerk, Jay Robb, to see if there has been a request for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I do not see any requests for public comment.
Okay, I will pause just a little bit, just in case I caught them off guard, I caught the public off guard, but do you want to give them an opportunity to comment on this, which we all, I think, when you said it beautifully, very promising opportunity, and we hope it generates some interest in this area of the city as our intention. So again, double-checking, Mr. Robb, anything?
Still no comments, requests for comment, Mayor.
All right, I am going to close our public hearing, and then I will ask Kristin to get the slide, put the motion slide back up for council's consideration.
I move to adopt Ordinance 21-02, an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code by adding a new Article 7 concerning a tax incentive program for businesses in the entertainment district plan development on second reading.
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We've got, all right, Jeff Hallwell, get to work. All right, moving on, resolution, you guys have been super busy with your interviewing, very impressed. Resolution 21-06, a resolution appointing a member of the City of Lone Tree's Planning Commission. And Jay, are you going to introduce this? Are you going to introduce them all, Jay?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. See, I'm bringing you three resolutions this evening to appoint vacancies on some of the city commission boards and committees. And Chris, if you go ahead and advance the first slide. So Daryl Haskins resigned from the Lone Tree Planning Commission in December of 2020, which is unfortunate, and I know they were sad to see him go. We advertised for the vacancy between mid-December and mid-January, and we received four qualified applicants. Councilmembers Shaw and Carpenter held interviews on Monday, February 1st, and Resolution 21-06 recommends that Kyle Adamson be appointed to the Lone Tree Planning Commission, and I will defer to the council members to speak to the merits of Mr. Adamson. to the council members to speak to the merits of Mr. Adamson.
Thanks, Jay. Okay, who's up? Wynne?
Happy to speak. It was, as our city clerk stated, a very tough decision, very talented individuals, and we are very pleased about Kyle Adamson, who brings an architect's background to the Planning Commission.
Great. Jay, anything to add?
Yes, no, just echo that. It was a great batch of talent. Kyle's really kind of young, passionate, driven, and has a really, I think he'll contribute a lot from his architectural perspective to the commission.
Great. All right, which one of you wants to, I think we're ready for the motion slide, Jay, whichever of you would like to make that motion.
I'm happy to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we've got one motion and one slide. Wynne, go ahead with the motion, and I think I know who the second will be.
I move to adopt Resolution 21-06, a resolution appointing a member of the Lone Tree Planning Commission.
And I will second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and I want to say thanks to Wynne and Jay for their good work on the interviews. Those are tough, especially when you've got really qualified candidates. So moving on to the next resolution, 21-07, and this is regarding the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. And again, well, Jay, you want to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chris, if you could just advance to the next slide. This vacancy was a result of Tony Anderson resigning from the Board of Adjustment and Appeals in the fall of 2020. And from the same pool of candidates, Councilmembers Shaw and Carpenter interviewed on February 1st for the Planning Commission. Many of them expressed interest in serving on the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. As a result, they're recommending Alicia Brown be appointed to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and I will defer to the council members to speak to Alicia Brown's merits.
And Jay, we'll start with you this time.
All right, yeah. Alicia is really articulate. I think she'll be, she'll play a role in this city beyond this appointment, for sure. So we just wanted to keep her engaged. Again, a great town, I think she's going to contribute a lot, certainly in this capacity, but also down the road.
Great. Wynne, anything to add?
I would add she's actually had experience in a nearby community on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, so she will serve this board well.
Great, great. Okay, I think Jay, your turn to, we'll look for the motion, Jay Robb, and then Jay Carpenter, I think it's your turn to go first.
It is indeed. I move to adopt Resolution 21-07, a resolution appointing a member of the City of Lone Tree Boards of Adjustments and Appeals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. And then finally, we've got Resolution 21-08, and this is regarding the Lone Tree Audit Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Final resolution for this evening. Thanks, Chris. Merlin Anderson stepped down from the Audit Committee at the end of 2020. We advertised for this vacancy. We actually sent letters out to CPAs in the community and received an overwhelming response. Six very qualified applicants interviewed with Councilmember Shaw and Anderson on February 5th, and Resolution 21-08 recommends the appointment of Dan Lindsay to the Lone Tree Audit Committee. And again, I'll defer to the council members to speak to the merits of Mr. Lindsay.
All right, we're going to have Councilmember Anderson start this time.
In total, very well-qualified candidates, all with good experience in accounting, CPA work, some stronger in government work than others with both private and government work. Dan just had an outstanding approach towards how he would serve the committee, and had some great ideas in terms of public engagement, and just a lot of enthusiasm for wanting to be on the group. And I think Wynne and I both felt comfortable that even though several of the candidates were very well-qualified, Dan was probably the best fit for where we're going in the future with the city.
Great. Wynne, any additional comments?
No, I think Councilmember Anderson hit every point.
Good. All right, Councilmember Anderson. Jay, will you put the motion on? We're going to have you do this one. Share the wealth this evening.
Mike, do you want to go ahead and make the motion?
I can't see the motion.
All right, I'm going to have Wynne make the motion. You do the second.
Have Wynne make the motion.
Absolutely. I move to adopt Resolution 21-08, a resolution appointing a member of the City of Lone Tree Audit Committee.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and thank you to, the Mayor Protam and I got off easy on the interviews evidently, and our thanks again to all three of the other council members for their good work on interviewing this super-talented residents of Lone Tree to fill these very important boards and commissions. So thanks to you guys for doing that. So that concludes our formal agenda with the exception of council comments, and we will start with Councilmember Anderson.
Just a reminder about Thursday night at the South Suburban Sports Complex. Folks that were invited can attend. Jay and I had a chance to make a quick tour a little earlier, but what an amazing facility and asset to the greater community for our residents, both in Douglas County and Arapahoe County. This is really a terrific facility that South Suburban put together, and I hope people can attend.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you, yes. I would like to comment about just the amazing capabilities of the citizens of this city. Through all of those interviews, we continued to see people interested, engaged, delighted to serve, motivated to help, and it is such a pleasure to see that within a community. All that willingness to participate is enough to make your day several times. So, thank you.
Thanks, Wynne. Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, it's been a long day and a long night, so I'll keep it very brief. Been pretty busy with those kind of youth initiative. We did a nice, long planning meeting last week. We have a bunch of new members too, some fresh blood, so it's good. We're kind of reinvigorated, trying to figure out how to get through this year in the not-so-normal world that we're living in, and then really look forward to next year as well. But the whole focus is on mental health, for sure.
Yeah, I bet, I bet, Jay. All right, well, we want to help, so you let us know. Okay, Mayor Protam Brunick?
Well, I'll just spend a small moment thanking Sky Ridge Hospital. As many of you know, I lost my dad on the 3rd after I missed our last conference, or our last council meeting, and I will just say the unbelievable care that we received at Sky Ridge, well before they knew, it was the Mayor Protam that was there, is just deeply appreciated. You know, we felt, we went through the whole end-of-life process there and received help from Denver Hospice, and it was just such a reminder of the deep compassionate work that is done within our city every day by the hospital and the hospital staff there. So just super grateful that I live here as a resident, and that we have such a remarkable facility in our midst. So thank you to them and to all of you for stepping in for me while I was gone. Really appreciate it.
So Kath, you know, it's certainly in our hearts and minds and our prayers that your family, as you went through that, and you know we're sending just our deepest condolences to you for that significant loss. And I think you, eloquent, my council, you're eloquent as always, raising very important institutions and entities and people that make a difference and matter, and make the secret sauce of our City of Lone Tree. I think, you know, we have such a promising community. When you look back, just even tonight, with the CBCs and the teen court kids that came and spoke to us, and the opportunities that we have potentially partnering again with CDOT and a mobility hub in our city, and really executing on the vision that 26 years ago, or 27 years ago, a group of residents sat on decks and porches to talk about what would a city be like. And as I reflect on the great work that you guys, that council members, and our staff, and our community, and our businesses have done over these years, I can't imagine how proud they would be as we really have continued to advance the ball in very, very challenging times and under challenging circumstances. And really, you know, I think our community development team, hats off to them for getting the first attainable housing project across the line. I think those are some of the longest-tenured employees in the city with Jennifer Drybread. We're not, I think she's leaving now, darn it, because she got that finally done, but with good work with that whole team and Kelly First, who's been there. But I just want to say, I hope you guys are all starting to see the light, the window opening, the opportunity, the promise continuing. I think we had to hunker down in 2020, but I'm so proud to be sitting virtually alongside you guys, staff and council, and I look forward to seeing what the rest of the promise of 2021 is going to bring for all of us. So with that, my friends, we are adjourned. Thanks for being here, and thanks to any members of the public that rejoined us this evening. So thanks, Oh, yeah, I said we're adjourned, right? We're adjourned. Okay.